Invite you all to stand with me before we fully open the meeting, a minute's silence, in respect of the loss of former councillor and former town mayor Albert Payne, who served the town for many, many years as an enthusiastic and passionate community activist, and was also mayor from 2001 to 2002. So if you would join me please for a minute's silence. Thank you all. So, moving on to the agenda items, 30822, declarations and disclosure of community interest. Do you receive any additional interest not already registered? Obviously, if anything should become apparent during our course of our conversations, please feel free to indicate. Are there any? We go on to 30922, apologies for absence please Karen. Thank you very much. We then move on to 31022, which is the minutes. Further minutes of the full council meeting held 26th of July to be confirmed to the true record. Certainly, technically.
Check technically.
Check meeting. It's a quite brief meeting, which is quite interesting. So the meeting begins within the minutes of the full council, 26th of July. Which is one. Two, I think it is. Into three. True record. Thank you.
Super. Any objections? Thank you both very, very much. We then move on to the committee minutes. We'll kick off with the heritage and town events committee meeting held on the 4th of August. That's chaired by myself. We have a couple of action points, a couple of items of resolved business, and I'm incredibly grateful to councillor Wright being able to attend Skavina, as us unable to unfortunately. There's no recommendations, so move the minutes please. We then move on to the planning committee of the 9th. Councillor Wright please.
Present the minutes of the planning committee on 9th of August. One, two and three. There are no recommendations. Objections?
All in agreement? Lovely. So moved. We then move on to the special finance meeting held Tuesday the 23rd of August. There are no recommendations. There are two resolved items of business relating to the Royal British Legion works. I beg leave to move minutes. Councillor Crawford, can I hand over to you the allotment committee please?
Yes, I'd like you to move the minutes to the allotment committee. Okay, I'd like to move the minutes.
No, you do have to stand councillor Crawford.
I do?
Yes.
Below the line. Okay, very fine. Still like moving the minutes to the allotment committee, the 20th of August. There's one recommendation on page one, that the terms of reference attached to annex be recommended to the full council or to any committee. Thank you.
So those have already been proposed and seconded by councillor Tullott and councillor Harvey. Are you happy to stand while that goes on seconding? Everybody in agreement? Agreed. Sue, thank you. Move the minutes. We then move on to amenities. Councillor Jeremy please.
Thank you very much. These are the minutes from the Wednesday, the 7th of September meeting. It's mostly resolved business, but there is one recommendation, which is a separate agenda item this evening. So I'll just move the minutes as are and put the recommendation at all for the time being.
Agreed. Be coming up onto 315, for those who are following the agenda closely. And then we go on to the central committee. Sorry, standing up again, councillor Jeremy.
Just sufficient enough for me to close that one down. These are from the central committee meeting held the day after, on Thursday, 8th of September. There is one recommendation, and I can't flip back to the main agenda, but I think it's not separate agenda item, it's actually a recommendation of this committee. And so this recommendation relates to the memorial bench policy, and I'm grateful for the staff for updating the policy based on the feedback from the committee. So the one that you've got before you is the one that we amended and would like to present to all council please, to move that recommendation.
Councillor Harvey and councillor Crawford proposed and seconded that. All those in favour please. Super. Against? Abstentions? That's moved. Thank you. We move on. Sorry, Austin? Oh, move the minutes, sorry. She was on her roll. Turning pages, apologies. So we move on to the next agenda item, which may be remarks and reports. Yeah, kind of a busy time, and didn't become a busy time, and somewhat overheat, overtaken by events. I had the privilege of judging the Shandwell School art competition that set the garden centre, and I know it's something that I've always enjoyed as a councillor when I first came aboard, the squirrels and, yeah, horses. And I know from my time as a school governor that the young people, and frankly, the staff, really enjoy getting involved in this, and, and just the variety and sheer breadth of interpretation from the brief that they were given was absolutely super. So it was really nice to do something arty for a change. Obviously, the rest of the listing is there, and then obviously, we, we were taken over by the sad events recently of the loss of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II, and the subsequent proclamation of His Majesty King Charles III. Councillor Wright, apologies, you missed out an awful lot of the occurrences, but you were able to represent Skavina on your behalf. Yeah, you made it.
I wanted to stand in for the mayor to visit Skavina, which was their 25th anniversary of twinning with Hert, which is also our twin town. Skavina have six twin towns. Those that present represent the Hert themselves, along with a Ukraine twin town, and one from Slovakia. The ones from Italy and Czech Republic, I need to attend. It was quite a full programme, visits to winery factory, a nice form dinner in the evening, speeches were rather long, lots of it was in Polish and German, and I think this is something that we all struck with the, the language. Cranes didn't speak hardly any English, Slovaks chose to speak Slovak, much to the point of the Germans. The Germans didn't speak to us in English, so we were well away there, and the Poles had an attempt at English, but it wasn't strong, so it was mixed fact. But we did have quite a good conversation with the mayor, I presented it on behalf of the town, and the mayor a clock commemorating the 25th anniversary of the Skrinas twinning with Hert, which was well received. The Polish are very keen to continue with this twinning, however, they are a little frustrated in that we are unable to get the community groups involved. I did explain the demise of our own twinning association. It's difficult to, to identify ways that we can do. Obviously, the, the swimming links with, like Nestle and Hert continue, and potentially could be something they could bolt on to occasionally. There's a chess tournament. We have Polish school in that now, which I think there may be some force there that we could, even if it's when they come over to visit, to, to engage with the Polish community here in that. But I think we do need to think about what we do in terms of the screening and making, rather than we have races to town events and civic committee, and it's something that we all need to put our minds to. But we were very pleased that we had been on for the first visit for six years, with Covid coming in then in place, and with the events in Ukraine has meant that they are unable to do, or come over to one of our jubilee celebrations, which are a bit disappointing, because they do enjoy that time when they come to the UK. They have been working with Hert, both in taking migrants or refugees, shall I say, from Ukraine, housing them both in Skavina and in Hert. And there's about 2,000 in the Skavina area, similarly in Hert as well. Hert, I think, donated a fire engine to their cause, and that was sent to Skavina, and then the Polish arranged for the Ukraines to pick it up. It was easier to get Ukraine trucked to take it over the border. So they've been working quite well together, and it's noticeable the Poles and the Hert are working together. But we need to somehow be part of it, or, you know, withdraw really, because it's not really fair on them to, to ask us to. 2024 marks the 20th anniversary of our twinning in Skavina, so that's giving us something which we can possibly work to. But obviously, we may have a coronation next year that could be something we can invite them, them to. So that's something to discuss for when we do civic and town events. They are, as I say, very welcoming and very generous. We did participate in the community day, met a number of the local people there, pleased to see you. I've made a little speech on the, on the stage there, but it was pretty brief and in English on the brain, so couldn't really do justice to it. Hopefully it was translated better. But no, it was worthwhile going, and it's good to keep those things going. So the other event I got down there was the cricket club, which turned up president's day in lieu of the mayor. As the mayor has indicated in the past, they're looking to get a pavilion built up. Talking to the chairman, there is, or the president, they're very frustrated at the moment in that to obtain funding, you need a lease that allows you to have permission for that thing. And they're coming to a little bit of an impasse, shall we say, with Breckland and Hartwood, because the lease doesn't allow that. It needs to be put with the lease in to allow that pavilion to be built. So may I ask any Breckland councillors who are able to bend someone's ear that we get that pushed up the agenda sort of thing? The funding's not there, but I just won't touch you unless you've got a lease in place that allows it to be built. So that's my point.
Greetings. Just to let you know, we have actually already finished the public forum part, and we're into the meeting proper. But lovely to see you, and help yourself to a glass of water once you come. So moving on to 31322, town council representatives on other bodies. Mind, wave at me please. Somebody say something. Councillor Tullott.
I attended the Spence St Fad access trip on the 14th of the 9th. It was a limited meeting, closed meeting, because obviously it's in the morning period, and there was no police report, and they've been deployed to cover Sandy in London. I did bring up about the, the dog incident on the Barnham Common and the increased property around the town. But the comments from the police were, it's very difficult to get concrete, enough concrete evidence to prosecute people, but they are aware of the situation and take it forward. Really, there was not much else to report back, but the open meeting is on the 6th of October, and the next closed meeting is on the 12th of October.
Councillor Brindle, I, I noticed that you were trying to sign language to councillor Crawford, so I'm guessing this is a CBCC report.
Yeah, very likely. I was hoping to put him, but I'm sure he's down the line, I forgot. I'm big, gonna say very little. I was hoping to put him, but I'm sure he's down the line. I forgot because I'm big into saying very little. But just a remark, I mean, it's not singing the same, singing the same song over again. It's doing very well at the moment, partly because it's doing well in its standard way. So all rooms rock, but there's good work coming, lots of opportunity to build up small businesses. Trying to get a great thing for that. But also they're being very active in helping deal with issues arising from pandemic. And now I think arising from the, the wider issues of difficulty of paying bills. So it's really making a great contribution, I think, to Setford. There is a little special garden area that's being developed at the front, which is just empty and now been extended. And I think if you want a place of quiet reflection, often in the sun, but not always, that's a good bet. So might have a coffee and a meal and sit outside if you can in the fitting autumnal sun and enjoying something that I think is something that's effective to be proud of.
Certainly, and I can vouch for the comfortableness of the friendly bench assistant in the opening.
One of the things that's happening up there is, and with the help of Breckland Council, we're opening up a room up to, to buy something for people, people in need, social children and adults and everything. And also there's plans to have electric blankets given out as that going for material. Yeah, to people in need. And from what I was told, the blankets only cost two pence an hour to run. So I mean, that's a good thing to help the heating, you know, problems of the everything. And the other thing is we're planning on maybe doing two community lunches a week, aren't we? Is that correct?
One week.
Rather than one. A one week rather than one. Well, yeah, it's been a while, but we're increasing our community lunches to one week on Thursdays and then Tuesdays. No wonder, I don't, you missed it. Okay, anyway, it was actually, I'm getting, I, I, I'm probably even care.
That's good.
But we, we've now doing quite a few things to help the community dinner up there. And it seems to be really fortified well. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
That's why I didn't want to do it.
Yes, I believe that funding was approved at the cabinet meeting yesterday. So yes. No, it's, it's about supporting and clearly partnership working as well because no one organisation can do everything. It's, it's nice that we're all able to pull together. Has anybody else got any other reports? Has anybody else got anything for outside bodies that they're representatives on for the town council? I've been really specific how I phrase that, haven't I? Yes, Council.
Once again, mentioning the GTP that I'm a representative for and the fact that the meeting was postponed. And so we should hopefully have a meeting tomorrow.
Anybody else? Speak now, whoever hold your peas. Peas is. Peas, peas, yes. You do quite well, so congratulations. So we move on to three one four, which is reports from county and district councillors. Council Jeremy's been kind enough to provide you with his diary dates. I'm thinking that I need to put all of my meetings on because I'm feeling slightly inadequate now. Council Jeremy, would you like to kick off in a nice, thoughtful light?
Apologies for that, man. I think it's partly justified myself. I've been doing things. I forget sometimes what I'm doing and what I'm not. But I do keep log where I'm going just to keep my sanity frank. A couple of things I'll highlight firstly, the Fettford in Bloom and Wards, way back at the first of September. Great. Assistance with that. We were really pleased this year with the number of entrants to the four different categories and the quality of the finalists. And I think it was 12 or 11, 13 finalists were able to come to the award ceremony. And I think that shows the level of buying the people that were involved. And I'm very grateful for the two members of staff that supported the night of food and photography on the evening. All sorts of, you know, portraits frankly, but it all went very smoothly. And the people that were successful were very grateful for their awards. So I think it's a really good thing that the town council's done and I'm really pleased to see it back in, in, in action. Just still following on from Dennis's point about the community dinner on a Tuesday.
Sorry, Tuesday?
It's Tuesday. And everybody will get that. And from October, the community dinner will be every Tuesday, once a fortnight. It used to be a lunch, but actually now you don't want to, of course, me or one of my most people, I don't think, for a lunch. A dinner is much better, more families, more children. And they recommend you get between 40 and 60 people attending that. It's free, it's open to anybody. If you are able to and you want to pay, there isn't a place for donations. And, and you know, people do give donations and there's a whole mixture of people that go to it. And what myself and some others have started to do is to run a councillor surgery at them rather than sitting in the church or and treating our families, plonking ourselves in the corner of the surgery. And that is open to anybody. So if anyone wants to come and, and take part in the council surgery to assist, you are more than welcome. Majority of the people that go are that side and are part of the ward pro. Obviously, they tend to walk there. And but there are people from all over Fettford that go, surgery was two weeks ago, there's people from Covid and Woodford. So there is a variety. Just touched on the Breckland MTI meeting met recently. I won't say too much, Roy might want to say a bit more because he's been pressing for, for updates on MTI going forward. But Breckland are actively working on spending the current allocation of MTI money. Those of you that have walked along Abbey Meadows recently will have seen the new pathway being constructed over the last couple of weeks. I'm happy to tell you that at the end of the day, and that's coming on really well. And that's part funded by MTI. And one of the things that we agreed on at the most recent meeting was some funding to look at the Minster Gate Water Lane Underpass and that general area around the priory, which I think is really good news because we don't make nearly enough of the priory in that. But in the whole areas, actually, Charles Warren was in one side, prior on the other, actually could be a real focus. On the back page, I've just copied and pasted the full details about the latest House of Support Fund. That's the Breckland Council Support Scheme, up to £300. Credit where it's due, Chris Parvy's been an absolute legend of submitting these. He's helped numerous people. When I've been busy doing other stuff, he's been picking up some of the ones I've not had time to do. He's got a much better success rate than I have, so if you have any questions about that, ask him. But it is actually a really good scheme. I would encourage people to apply. And obviously, great news that it's been topped up. The last thing I'll run on about, there's a couple of photos down there at the bottom. The one on the left is a bus stop and you can see that. But there's a black sign and these popped up around Fettford a couple of years ago and they were supposed to have timetables in them. I thought they were county council funded, but they weren't. They were fully by their co services. And an awful lot of them fell into pit repair. They didn't have timetables in them. They got graffiti. They were smashed up. And co services, to their credit, where I've highlighted that they've been damaged and come and removed them. In some places where they know that that's a busy bus stop, they have replaced them and put timetables in them. And there's still a few dotted around town. So if you do have any in your own wards, do let co services go. It's just another industry that's gone or anything and it makes a big difference. I've got several gone from my ward. And then similarly with bins, partly as my roles, amenities. You know, we've had, I'm so glad you heard Barbara's update there about Stag because we've had a real spate of graffiti, particularly on street furniture. And Nick and the team have been brilliant at tackling that. It's a bit of a backlog at the moment. And some of them are Breckland, so we've not overly been cleaning those ones, but we are getting through them. The one on the right there was when I went to the, the memorial service for the Queen and the anniversary commemoration. And I was walking into the church with a whole load of dignitaries. It was great to see. We actually needed attendance from people elsewhere, but they walked with me from West Carmar, past that into St Cuthbert and I took a photo of it. And so not only has Nick sorted for, intentionally sorted out the bin issue, he's contacted the people that own that building and asked them to try and remove the graffiti, which I think is brilliant that our staff are getting involved in that sort of thing. Because it's a real waste and credit to Nick and the team for, for doing that. But if any of you have street furniture and that sort of thing in your wards, do let Nick know. Because now I've got a bit more capacity, this is the sort of thing that we can start to, to work on. Thank you.
Thank you. Council of Tullin, please.
I think mainly the difference on Tuesdays.
Sorry.
Have you had to be there? What time? And from five to obviously, you don't have to be. Thank you. On Tuesday, five.
So now that we have the Tuesday question cleared up, are there any other questions or worries for Council Jamie, please?
Sorry, I'm just going to add on that if I may. Sort of linked in with all this graffiti business that we've been going on about. We had a plan to try and get our own graffiti wipes for the town. Nick secured those. We were going to do it before the Queen's death, but we didn't want to do it while the schools are shut out. Because as soon as we try clearing it, they'd be bucking. And of course, with up here in the morning, we haven't done anything in that period. So I've got a plan and, and really all it is, is not to augment what, it's just to help the council officers what they do. So perhaps on this Friday afternoon, at half three, any councillors who are available. And I'll deliberately pick the end of the week in the afternoon, so there might be a few. If we could meet up at the Guildhall, we've got graffiti wipes, gloves, cloths. And we can go and make a quick blitz round the town, just that late afternoon, to help out the council officers. Also, once we've done that, we've got some ziplock bags, so all the councillors can take some of those graffiti wipes with them to let them keep them for the future and then top themselves up when they need to back out of council. But that means that any time you're going around, rather than running and reporting a tiny tag, you can just simply remove it. So that would be fifteen thirty or three thirty PM. Okay, on Friday afternoon at the Guildhall, if you could. Thank you.
Thank you, Council McDonald. I quite like the idea of gorilla graffiti wiping.
It's one like saying I'm going to terminate the tag, but it just.
Any alliterations good.
Council Harvey, please.
I'd just like to respond back. I'd like to remind you that we have a Breckland meeting on Friday afternoon though at three o'clock.
Okay, on Sunday regarding Carmar.
It's a half hour. It's a half hour window for that meeting. We'll be good.
All right, just a tad late.
It doesn't matter where I put the diary.
So I'll carry on going around the table, Council Brain.
Thank you, Madam Matt. Yeah, as Terry said, it is really quite nice that Breckland are going to pursue other fundings for the, for the town when the anti-Jeremy money disappears. I know that they are going to try and do as much for the town as possible, which is, which is really. I mean, we're, we're starting to get that right now. The work between town councils of Breckland is getting better. We are becoming a much neater group of people who are endeavouring to work together for the town, which is quite. Meaning, really hasn't been on the council for a number of years and we've never said anything but patchy jobs and fighting. So it's, it's really nice. Having looked at Terry's list of all the things that he has been doing and all the things he says. Always manages when he finds it on. Even now I'm retired, I can't find that amount of time. I understand that congratulations are in order. That he has now become the official candidate for this constituency for the paper party in the next election. So we may well be seeing him as a MP if he should be able to top of somebody who's quite high up there. But I'm sure he will put up with a very good fight. I'm just concerned that with having all of this on that he will be doing nationally, whether you're not going to be able to keep up with all his bits and pieces and his diary wipes even further. But congratulations that they've made the press man win. But no, I mean, it really is good that Breckland are now starting to actually put in a lot more for the town. I will be finding them to make sure that any funding that isn't that one will come.
Council Brain, any questions or comments for the Council Brain, please?
Just on the MTI generally, so not being involved with that. Just what is the process? Is the Breckland councillors the ones that are pushing Breckland to get that funding? Or is there MTI money that's being used at the moment? Or how do, how can we throw in, is that the thought to, to attract all this?
The MTI money has now actually finished. We had sixty one and a half thousand pounds left after what we had spent on the bathroom and the place. And that is a district councillor's decision. And what Breckland have done, they've done very well. We have nice group meeting of all the district councillors where we throw in all the ideas. And because several of us sit on this council, we have been able to put forward things that you've said about cycling and various other bits. And we try and kick that right to the forefront so that we actually try really hard to represent what the town council asks for. It's worked really well. Most of the projects have been extremely good. We are now looking for the last. Half of the sixty one thousand is going to be spent at the priory, the underpasses and the connection between Abbey and the road and that sort of entrance. We're looking to do something with the shielding of the electric. Because it's one of the horrible things, you know, we've got a great thing in the priory and then you have to look at that. So we're looking at shielding for that. And we have looked, asked if they can actually look at doing that with half of the money. The other half of the money, we are looking to use for marketplace lighting, electrics, match funding with the heritage money so that we can get the electrics done onto the market. And it's all got to be done by March two of three, two, two, three. Because that's when that pop ends. There are other pots that are going to take its place, but as yet we don't know how much or what we've got to do to get it. So this particular MTI money has been basically allocated as long as the, like everything else, we've just gone out to just get some consultants to have a little look, make sure that it's all done correctly. So thank you, hopefully the marketplace for this Christmas lighting, hasn't it? It's quite nice with something that can move art.
Thank you.
Happy everyone. Excellent. Council Harvey.
Yeah, thank you. Regarding the defunded, Terry was talking about, if anyone needs any help with their residents filling in the balls, just get in touch with me. If there's Breckland up the money now and reduce some of the agencies for people to be able to get it, which is really handy. It's really quite helpful. I mean, I've dealt with nine or 10 now. They're not always all successful, but the majority of them are. And it could be a godsend. I won't quote prime examples apart from the young lady whose partner left up. Young, two young children in a real bad state. We managed to get us the money as a help to tide, to tide her over, which is quite satisfying. On a slightly different subject, now it's getting late earlier, we're going to go about checking on street lights. If anyone knows to see any that are out, then let us know. Report straight away. Normally, the ones with two numbers and the other things are northward. And the Brecklings are the ones with the four digits, which has caused me an issue because the Coffey Mill Bridges lights, one isn't working. There's no numbers on it. If anyone knows. You know, so if anyone could help you with that one. If anyone knows any street lights that are out in their area, let us know and go and have a look.
I think the Coffey Mill one. I think the coffee mill one could be Norfolk because that's which belongs to Norfolk.
Yeah, they said it isn't. They said it's Breckland.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm correct.
She's not there either, so.
The discussion's commenced.
Yes.
I hope it's done by Tuesday or Friday.
Anything on councillor Harvey's report, please? In that case, councillor Brindle, is there anything you'd like to? Councillor Downing, is there anything that you'd like to bring?
Um, yes, just a couple of things I haven't mentioned. I attended one of the flagship meetings about the Abbey refurbishment and they've been held in the afternoon and they said that they've been having quite a good turnout for those. But I think, I think I spoke to you and said that they wish them some bit later in the evening, which are people who work, always make it, you know, until four, I think they were being held there. But at least they are going ahead and people seem to be engaging. But I think, I think there's going to be a lot more of that looking forward, you know, because I think people are getting quite anxious about that. And they are going to continue as long as they can. And the other thing that I've been involved with is you may be aware that we've got big, great big green week coming up and there's lots of people in our area that are coming together to declare support for their global action on climate change. And so you might see people giving out leaflets in town over the next week or so. And it's really advertising fair trade and climate justice. So you are given a little seed to plant, just to make you aware that that might be happening. You've got a handful of your garden, Terry. Because I think we need to, you know, keep on top of that George, UK government deliver on his promises about climate change. I think that's something we can let slip really. That's what we say.
Any questions or comments on that, please, team? Okay. Obviously, as well as the mayoral hat, I wear a county and a district have the same as councillor Jeremy does. Last week, Wednesday, I had the lovely walkout with our highways engineer and identified a number of issues and challenged on some poor processes, which is really good. And thank you, Mac, for feeding into that process because that's really, really helpful from that residents association point of view as well. We've identified a number of issues, said challenged on a couple of issues and I think we should see some action. And I was quite excited that, it doesn't take a lot to excite you really, it's really sad. But we've identified a new site for a potential Sams two location, which is not a powered post, so we can put it there. And mindful of feedback that has happened over recent months in terms of woodlands. So we've identified a new site there. We're currently working on one on Castle Lane in direct response again to residents' perceptions of what's happening there so that we can start to build an evidence base and then, yeah, put in intervention should they be necessary. On the Breckland front, it's just been incredibly busy, which is wonderful, but obviously I'm learning an awful lot of new stuff at the moment, so. But yeah, again, a bit like councillor Harvey, the night's drawing in, so I'm going walking the streets and looking at street lamps. It gets the steps up, it's really good. But yeah, obviously if there is anything that, yeah, any of us can support you with as district or county councillors, please, regardless of it, please, yeah, do talk to us because it's actually in our residents' best interest that we work together. Okay. Any questions on that? So in that case, we will move on to play park reporters' tender. The agenda on item states to consider the recommendation of the amenities committee. I am going to hand over at this point to the chairperson of the amenities committee because he can speak far more eloquently about it than I can.
Not sure I can, but thank you, Dawson. Firstly, thank you to those councillors that were able to go in and support the tenders for the play park. It's a really important part of the process and grateful for the time you gave to that. And you'll be aware, we took on as a town council thirteen areas, I think it was, from Breckland councils some years ago, and the vast majority of them are incredibly well used and they get wear and tear and frankly, we need to be spending some money on them as a council. We do have forty thousand pounds set aside in the budget for this financial year and I think the same again for the next year and I'm not saying that's good, I like that. And what we're asking council to do is to award a tender to company two and to agree that the tender is divided into phases with forty thousand pounds this current financial year, followed by forty thousand pounds the next financial year. And what we've asked staff to do is to prioritise, because it was a big list, to be honest with you, across the town, some of them are urgent and others, we've done all of the major health and safety ones already, this is the next desirable list, if you like. And the staff will prioritise what's best value for that forty thousand pounds. So that's essentially what we're recommending to council.
To open the floor for discussions, so, over to you, team. Yes.
I'd just like to, I'm fairly new to this, so I'd just like to understand forty thousand pounds, I know it's quite a lot on that, but also, I know that. No, I'm sorry. Told me everything I know. It'd be true, Pete, I'll look at that. Yeah, so forty thousand pounds, I guess a lot of money and over two years, you know, eighty thousand, that sounds a lot. I know it's going to be really expensive, play parks. I just, I just don't quite understand, how much do we need to spend is the question? So, you know, how much of a debt in the project is it going to make? Are we just going to keep tickling the health and safety stuff because next year some more stuff will have been broken? How much money do we need and how much are we going to make an impact on it?
I think the first thing to say is this is not a cumulation of bits that have been vandalised. We do have an ongoing repair and maintenance budget every year and if something is broke, there is a budget to go out fairly immediately and get it fixed. So this is in addition to that. So we have a repairs budget and I can't remember, is it about ten thousand pounds? Fifty thousand pounds a year. So we do have that annual budget for repairs and maintenance and, you know, generally do spend that. What we've been doing is more proactively looking at the equipment and saying, actually, is the matting coming loose? And an awful lot of this money is for matting, to be honest with you. It, you know, it does wear, it does come up and obviously it has to be done. So an awful lot of business for that. I think the total for the entire specification was about a hundred thousand pounds.
Seventeen.
Thank you very much. So between this financial year and next financial year, the lion's share of all of that work we've done. So this is quite a major investment in all the areas that we've got to bring them up to a fairly good standard, to be honest with you. But that's in addition to the vandalism or wear and tear budget, if you like. Thank you very much.
Anybody else, please? If not, can I ask a question? Obviously, the contractor has quoted on this as basis of doing the work. Is the contractor aware that this tender is being split and will this have an impact?
Do me the answer. I'll take it intense. The answer to that is no, they're not aware of that because obviously we haven't gone back to anybody to say that they are winning contracts. The amount of time that it will take, because the forecast was quite long for being able to get the spares and to actually carry out the work, it will be discussed with the winning contract when that is awarded, that this is the situation. And if there is an issue with that, we'll have to bring it back.
If I may, can I voice another concern? That we are, whilst we do an indicative budget for the next, when we set our budgets in November, we do an indicative budget for year two and year three. Invariably, when year two comes into current year, when we have those discussions later on in the autumn, it invariably changes. And I am mindful that what we're actually saying by this resolution is that we are committing this council to a budget expenditure prior to the budget setting process. Am I correct in that understanding?
We have two, the operational budget, which is funded as a bit better, and the project exposure, which is funded as a part. This is part of the project structure, part of the project. So this is not being funded by PSE, this has been funded by, by a play park reserve and that is the funding that is executed in this project.
So if I may, if there is an existing reserve that's earmarked for this sort of expenditure, why is it all not happening in one go, if there is that? Because actually theoretically, the reserve exists, it is for that item. What is the reasoning behind not spending it all in one go? Because we'd need a resolution for county, council to spend that because it wasn't part of the plan. But is there a reason for not doing it all in one go?
I think the project budget, we knew that we had starting, so we refurbished on the play parks and we just thought, well, it could be a formidable way that we could spend so that we can also contribute through the operational basis. Those reserves are going to last forever. So what the intention, why the thinking was at that stage, we could expect the kind of expenditure that has come up now, we thought if we could get a sustained programme going with about twenty to forty thousand pounds going forward, that that could be funded on a sustainable basis. And that was really the reason that we, I didn't argue a lot, we took up ten first and then the project budget second or third together, we haven't done that.
So with my finance hat on and apologies, what is the impact in terms of our reserves? Because going back into the finance papers, our reserves are ultimately our investments. What impact is that going to have? Because obviously our investments provide us with a level of income. And if I recall correctly from the accounts, last year was around thirty thousand, which if we were to lose, obviously we wouldn't lose all of it, but if we were to lose all of it, that represents about a three percent increase on precept for last year, for example. So utilising those reserves, because you cannot only spend what's in the piggy bank once, what would be the impact going forward?
We're only, I'm just trying to answer your question, there's something that I want to do, because difficulty to do. If we start, if our level of expenditure continues, we will have to start selling of our investments. We won't be budgeting about two hundred thousand pounds on projects for the next year, probably the same amount for the year after that, as how we fund that. We haven't spent such much on all of those, we're not funding it on PSE, but ultimately this coming out of cash flow. So we haven't done a cash budget and maybe in a bunch of revisions that we do, that we're going to do it through.
Can I ask one final question then? I'll come to you councillor Barretto. You've said cash flow. What is the impact on our cash flow at the moment, bearing in mind that this council is ultimately writing the checks for the Standard Fourth Trust and Standard Fourth Trust has not repaid that money as yet? Where are we at with resolving that, please? Because that's impacting on our cash flow.
I have a discussion with the trustees, we have a plan, we hope to at least get access to the Standard Fourth Alice. So we have a standard for meeting on the twentieth of October and we hopefully we can execute that plan by then. Our cash flow has, what's happened is we've ended up, because in the last few years, we had significant cash flow, significant visits, all of this happening is that our cash flow is slowly eroding. At the moment, it's not as bad as it was last year, for example, but it's, it's, it is on a trajectory and again, part of the long term funding that we're going to look at, what we're going to look at this year, is how do we ensure that that doesn't happen? We actually put more, put a salary on reserves, ensure that we sense that cash flow to fund future expenditure that we take out of it.
Thank you. Sorry for hijacking that. Councillor Barretto, please.
I'm just going to answer another question. I'm correct, when we went to tender with this, Company One and Two, it didn't, it didn't tell them that it was going to be over the course of two years, because obviously we bargained for two years, as they have decided. So they think it is the bulk of the work, in the total bulk of the work, but they're not aware of the timeline, let's put it that way. But so let's just say that you go back to them and Company Two, which is in favour because of the hundred thousand, which is supposed to be, what I should, you know, puts us in a position today. And they say, okay, but unless we do it, you know, in one go, we're not going to drive on for two years because in the meanwhile, you know, materials may go up, reflection or whatever, it may high, you know, increase that value or may not accept to do the full two years for that value. So let's just say that Company Two is not willing to accept the terms for one reason or the other. We go back to Company One, we only have two tenders, those two companies. Right, so we go back to Company One, we left to Company One. Now, that's seventeen, one hundred seventeen, which is above the budgets we have period from this year to the next year. So where are we going to source the remaining if we have to? That's the question I have.
Councillor, you've indicated that in response to councillor Barretto. Okay. Can you, are you, are you in a position to answer councillor Barretto's question?
I mean, we really, we had no idea of the tenders would come back to that. I mean, you know, some that said it would be sixty thousand, you know, I would be, it just hasn't turned out like that. And I think what we've got for the first time is we've actually got a identification of what it does cost us. We haven't been set aside money over the years, so this has been quite a little bit of a wake up call for us officers because we now are going to be looking at different book of plans going forward as a placement, as a refurbishment plans. And this is informing us, but the risk that councillor Barretto's identified is a true is, we, the tenders may say to us, you know, take a walk, we're not too sure. So I think it really is a matter of, you know, we've got some information now that's responding, but we've only come to the value of forty thousand pounds each year and forty thousand pounds next year, is how we try to fill all of that in some process. And I think the comment that Tom Park made, we have to sit down and have some discussions, but we need a mandate from this meeting to be able to do that.
If I may, just to push back, my, my concern here is that both tenders above eighty thousand, forty thousand one year plus forty thousand another, still doesn't take us close to Company Two, let alone Company, Company One. If that falls true and we play one, we fully agree with that, they need to be refurbished, need to be paid for families and children, and how, and where do we get those, those values? When you're talking about going to the investments and shifting away from the investments and reserves, so I think this is a conversation that needs to be definitely done by the councillors and the officers. This is something that needs to be resolved because you can't possibly start building or hiring one of the tenders if you don't know where you're going to source the money. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Jeremy, please.
And thank you for your observations because I think you're absolutely spot on and there's some discussions to what we've had a committee announce there. And I think the point Anna made there about the tenders came back significantly more than we budgeted, that's, that's really what the problem of the matter is. And given, you know, the cost of materials, particularly metal, which you've got, is that's partly why and that's, that's frustration. And I will happily agree with you that the current wording of the recommendation is not right, because I, I can tell you what's going to happen. And the company will say, we'll do forty grands worth of work, but there's no way at all that they guarantee those prices, first of all. There's no guarantee. And I wonder, with your help of this perhaps, madam, we've got forty thousand pounds this financial year, let's get as much work as we can done as part of that specification for forty thousand pounds and agree to that this evening. If the company was sensible and our strongest hand is if the company did that work well and there's an indication that we have more money in the future to do additional work, hopefully they'll do a really good job and want to work with us. I think that's the resolution we should be making as a council this evening is to agree with fourteen, get as much work as we can done with that and then have a separate tender process for any remaining work in the new financial year.
Councillor Brain, please.
Yeah, I was going to say very similar to what Terry has just mentioned. Other than, we're not talking about doing it over two years, we're talking about doing it over six months. This company hasn't started. Um this company hasn't started yet. Um they're not going to be told uh until mid October, obviously. Um then you've got no member in December, uh which is winter. Uh my question is, we're in that time either. Um so I think we really need to talk to this company to, to find out their timeline. Because I'm quite sure that they're not going to say, we want to do this all before Christmas. Uh you know, it just ain't possible. So I think perhaps we need to be a little bit more flexible. Um because we are talking about a six month period. Uh and in that time, obviously, we will be doing more projects. One of the questions that I can ask is that when we took over the thirteen pay parks, we were paid by Breton eighty something, which I don't believe is I can't remember the hundreds in the background. Yeah. So has that all gone? In, in the period, so we're actually saying that these play parks are costing us an awful lot of money um to keep to this type of standard. Um if that's the case, I really think we've got to start looking at this being funded from precept. Because it is for the benefit of the people and they're the people that are using it. Um for us to spend our reserves and keep them back to them and keep them back to them until they're amen is not what I signed up for. I believe we've got to look at what our costings are and fund them accordingly. And if this means going back to the precept and saying, look, if this is the sort of thing that you want as townsfolk, then it has to be paid for from the precept, not just robbing what we've got. Because once that's gone, that's gone. And we need to keep healthy reserves. I mean, we are now currently only just keeping enough reserve to cover what we strategically have to cover. Um you know, if it all goes fairly up, we are very, very close at this moment in not being able to stay solvent. Um we can't do that as people who sit around this table to spend people's money. We need to be looking at that and coming back and saying to people, what is it you require? And we've got to look um at precept um for next year. Um if we're going to run this, because as Carla has already mentioned, we're already over seventeen grand light on the best quote. Um so that's another seventeen thousand that we've got to spend, that we've got to get. If neither of these companies are prepared to look at it on a timeline, that could very easily be another thirty grand. Um well, once you start now talking a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty thousand coming out of reserves purely for play parks or to do anything else, just to keep the play parks as they are, I think perhaps we need to look at it from a, from a different perspective because that's not what we're here to do. We're not here to spend all this council's money on one small project. There are lots of other good things that this town needs as well. And we're going to be running out of, out of money. Um and as I say, I would hate it to be my watch that we spend all the reserves. But I think we need to look.
Thank you councillor. Councillor, I'll come back to you because I'm live. Councillor Brindle hasn't spoken on this matter yet, if that's all right. Councillor Brindle.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Um of, of narrow, there's lots of, what Roy's just been saying. I think it's reasonable to remind ourselves at the moment that every uh pound we have got in that investment is probably going to be worth ninety pence a day after tomorrow. There is a real risk that our reserves, if they are in money rather than if you like, property or land, are going to disappear into inflation. So you can make an argument saying that the more we spend and get actual results, the better. So Roy is right most of the time, ninety percent of the time, that's the way you behave with money. But if, if it's a strong inflation period, I think you have to just bear in mind that the money is disappearing without us spending it.
I'd remind councillor Brindle that investments are long term. And as you'll probably recall from the reports that you've received in the past from finance committee, that there is quite a spread on the investments in terms of um liquidity and safety in terms of bonds, gilts and also shares. Um and we've been mindful and know councillor Harvey has worked very hard that we're more mindful of the quality of our investments and that the risk is on a matched basis and we don't go for those high risk side of things. Investments can go up as well as down and down as well as up. So you are absolutely right, but they are a long term situation. And our, as you will recall from the papers from finance about a year and a half ago, um highlighted that ultimately our reserves are our investments. So anything that we do do will impact that.
Now, just coming back to my own there. Um I, I, I fully accept what you say, but I just point out that there's never been a period in history when we've had a major period of the opposite of inflation. So once the money loses its value, it never regains its value. Never. Never. And of course, if you go back to the end of the twenties, beginning of the thirties, inflation was so rampant and it was happening in Germany before that, that, that just people ruined it. We ju, we just need to bear in mind that the value of money actually declines, it does not increase.
Councillor Harvey, please.
Excuse me if I don't know the exact terminology and words here, but I find it incredibly retorting about putting money on the children's health. It's a set of play parks to our family. We want the children out there in the fresh air. If we don't spend this money, we're going to lose the play parks. And Roy says something that he wouldn't like to happen on his watch. I would be blaming suicide if we lost play parks under my watch. And I just cannot believe you would put your money in front of children.
If, if you've got a point of order, I'd like to quote the standard, what a number, please. Go, 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 go.
Three, one, two, I think, which is that if I, uh if it comes down to a personal thing that somebody said, you can come back. Should it be?
Was I personal?
Just like.
I will give you the right reply.
Thank you, Madam.
I didn't say that we should do away with the play parks. I said that we must look at where we fund them from. Not necessarily the reserves. We have other income sources, one of which is precept, amongst other things. Yes, play parks are very, very important to the welfare of our children. But there are lots of other things that are for the mental health of adults and everybody else. So we just need to be a little bit more careful as we say, right, we'll spend the bank reserves just on that. We must look at what we can do with precept and precept.
Councillor Jeremy, please.
Just a couple of points, I'm sure you're keen to move on. Um I've been here fourteen years as a town councillor. Uh I remember when we took them on from, from Breton and we insisted that they were done up to a reasonable standard. And what I might describe as reasonable, just where. They were, they were dangerous, but that's, they were dangerous. They weren't dangerous when we took them on. But this is probably the single biggest investment in play areas in the last ten years. And I think it's really important that we put that in context. Yes, it is a, a big period, you know, a big chunk of money over two years, eighty thousand pounds, I'm not debating that. But in ten years, yes, we do have an annual repair budget, but fifteen thousand pounds for thirteen play areas um is not a huge sum of money. This is a significant investment, but it should be looked at in the context of over a long period of time. And as Chris said, one of the reasons we're having to invest in them is because they are well used. We're talking about matting and wear and tear of the chains and links and, you know, the one on my ward, which uh features on the list that needs work done to it, quite close. Um every single time I drive past, there are children using it. It's very, very popular, as are, you know, some of the list is Castle Park as well. Castle Park there is incredibly well used, not just by children from Fethford. Um we spend very little money frankly as a town councillor on children and young people. Uh it's improved a lot over the last few years, but proportionate to, to uh, uh, you know, the, the number of children and young people in there. We do spend a relatively small amount of money on them. Um and the other point I'd make was that if you go to other councils, it's the district council, it's the borough council that run play areas. You know, uh we have the exact same debate immediately about public toilets because we also run there and the exact same is happening. Gradually, the commuter sum that we were giving is going down. Uh both those things ordinarily are run by the district council and have income that we don't. That's why we're having a funding challenge because inflation's gone up, the materials have gone up. It's costing a lot of money to service these things and we don't have the income sources. So that's why we're having this point. And we're kind of delving into a theoretical debate because as the finance manager said, we agreed this budget, we agreed forty thousand pound this year and next year, and we all voted to adopt it. What we're merely talking about is do we spend late forty grand now or forty grand next year? Or, or what's the best process for a ten point view, whether or not we should spend the money?
Just ladies and gentlemen, if you are watching this, we had some technical issues. Um there was a recommendation that came out of discussions under agenda item three, one, five, twenty two. Um the new recommendation which I am proposing is the council commits the identified forty thousand pounds in current year project budget to facilitate play park repairs to the tenderer company two. Council delegates responsibility for identifying those works to officers. Councillor Jeremy, are you still happy to second that one for me? Thank you. All those in favour, please? That's unanimous vote. Thank you all very, very much and apologies about the technical issues. So we move on to three, one, six, twenty two, which is Anglia and Bloom. Councillor Jeremy, I'm going to hand over to you again. Don't make the internet crash, please.
Um well, hopefully some uh very positive news to conclude the meeting this evening. And members will hopefully recall that as a town, we entered the Anglia and Bloom petition earlier this year. We submitted um entries to three different categories. Um and the judges came to Fethford in July. And I'm very pleased to announce that Fethford was successful and been awarded silver uh in the town category for the whole of the Anglia region, which I think is a really good achievement for Fethford. Um I'd like to present this to you in a moment and if I may just say a couple of words. Um firstly, a huge thanks and congratulations to our own staff. You know, I see our staff really attending to various planters and shrub beds around the town and top of all the other commitments that they have to do, they've done a fantastic job. I know the one, the roundabout outside, the Green Dragon pub was done by our staff and that looked absolutely brilliant this year. And also to our contractors, we've got a number of contractors that work for us. And also to our contractors, we've got a number of contractors that work for us. Um, and, you know, they've done a fantastic job looking after different bits of space. And volunteers, uh, we have a whole number of volunteers that tend to, uh, these gardens here, but also that help with the, uh, crocheting and the, the flowers that went around the gift hall and Carnegie, which were notified, the judges. Uh, and also sponsors, we've been very fortunate as a town councillor that we've had, um, a whole number of sponsors, uh, business owners, particularly who sponsored planters, tubs, uh, some of the cemetery somewhere, and a particular thanks, uh, to them. Uh, but also thanks, I think, to, 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 to you guys, as, as a council. We continue to budget money to enable, uh, that work to take place. And whereas other towns have seen, uh, budgets for floor displays and, uh, hanging baskets particularly, uh, slashed over the years. That's something that we've always maintained as a town councillor. Um, what I see this as, uh, this award is recognition, uh, for what we've done, uh, also some encouragement for, for what we've got left to do. Uh, the judges, uh, enjoyed their visit round, um, and, and I'm very much looking forward to welcoming them back next year to see how we've progressed. Uh, silver is great, but, uh, well, gold would be better. Uh, but no, a real credit to everyone that's been involved.
We have to do. Swatise. Can we do? We do it with the. Just move on. Being snappy now.
My day drops.
And, and thank you, and I'm delighted to see that on behalf of the town council. And yes, we do, when we pull together, we pull together well. So, we'll move on to you guys. So moving on, community engagement, to discuss and agree in consultation or media release required. I respectfully suggest celebrating a silver award. Any other ideas from the floor, please? With that, a brief moment, I'll move on to committee officers' update. Do you receive any update from the committee officers since the issue of the agenda?
Nothing more come up for discussion since the issue of the agenda.
Thank you. So I thank you all very, very much. Thank you for your patience during that brief moment of technical issues, and the meeting is closed. Thank you.